This conference will now be recorded. 2020 City Council Meeting to Order. I will begin with a roll call. Starting at the top, Councilman Couch.
Here.
Councilman Owen. Councilwoman Carnegie. Councilwoman Kinzer. Councilman McGoffin. Councilman Allen, I see you. Are you there? And Councilman DeYoung.
Present.
Good, thank you. Okay. Let's begin with the approval of the agenda. It's a very short agenda tonight. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the...
Go ahead. I'm sorry, who said that? Please identify yourself.
Councilman Couch.
Who made the motion?
Andrew Squerly.
All right, thank you, Councilman Couch. Do I have a second?
Councilmember Kinzer, second.
Okay. I have a motion then by Councilman Couch, seconded by Councilwoman Kinzer. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Is that an opposed or is that for it? Came in late. Motion passes. Okay, looking for approval of the consent agenda, items one through four.
I move to approve the consent agenda items one through four. This is Carnegie, sorry.
Do I have a second?
Councilmember Kinzer, I second.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Kinzer. I have a motion by Councilwoman Carnegie, seconded by Councilwoman Kinzer. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so let's move on to staff reports. That motion carries, by the way. Let's move on to staff reports. We'll start with Finance Director Jill Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, Council. We're currently working on our 2019 annual report, which is required by state statute to be filed with the state auditor within 150 days after the close of our full year. This year, the deadline falls on May 29th, but the governor issued a proclamation and two subsequent extension waiving this 150-day requirement. He most recently requested a 60-day extension from the legislature, which would take us to July 3rd. However, the current extension was only granted through May 31st. So we were told by the governor's office two weeks ago that he had every intention of requesting an additional extension from the legislature, but as of today, we have not received any further indication that this extension is going to be granted. So we are proceeding as if the deadline is Sunday, May 31st, and our report should be filed no later than this Friday. We're continuing to stagger our staffing schedules, practicing social distancing, and working on essential functions. And other than that, I have nothing new to report.
All right, thank you.
I have a question for our Finance Director.
Sure.
Yeah, great, thank you. Councilmember DeYoung for our Finance Department. Hey, how did we do in our first quarter to budget? In revenue and expenses?
I'm going to defer that to Doug.
Doug, how did we do in our first quarter?
We're doing just fine in the first quarter. We have probably about three more days to go, and we'll be sending out our first quarterly financial report for the year. So with the COVID challenges, we have some time issues there to deal with. But you should be seeing that. So far, we're looking good. The thing that we're waiting on right now is to see how May reports actually look, because that'll be the first tell of what our revenues are doing with the COVID virus.
Thanks so much.
You bet.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Director of IT, Bill Chambers.
All right. You see me there? Just plugging away with web updates and meetings and some Facebook posts. Glenn is out this week, a relatively light week.
Chief Tucker for the PD.
All right. Let's see. Things are kind of... Now, we're still kind of in flux here. We're still trying to figure out how we're going to shift back to normal operations. We've got... Essentially, where we're at right now is where we were when we began the quarantine process. We essentially have four squads of officers working. Lieutenant McElwraith has one day shift. I have another. Sergeant Eaton has one, and then Sergeant Sorstall has one. And we're all on four on, four off. So we don't have much crossover, so it's kind of hard for us to actually coordinate, which I think everybody in the city is having that issue, not working with their counterparts very much and trying to do things via email and phone calls. It's always, I guess, a second-best option, but we're making do. We're still not figuring out how we're going to make a transition. We really have our four squads of three officers, including myself and Lieutenant, and it's going to take some time to get back to normal. We won't see Deion back from the academy until July 10th. We're looking like we're getting our next person into the academy, hopefully, in June. And then we're going to scatter the rest through July and August as we get them off to the academy. That's our initial information. So staffing-wise, I'm going to have to work with Doug and the mayor to see exactly, you know, as we start to open back up, how that's going to work. And while we're on that note, we're getting more and more questions from people on how the... Basically, how the state opens back up. There's one business who keeps asking us, can I open? Can I open? And honestly, we really have to keep saying no at this point. It doesn't fit the Phase 1 that we're still in. So we're going to hopefully be able to work out some details, give people better information. And back to our park protester. That's kind of become a moot point since the parks are all open. But that case has been forward to the prosecutor. We have a new prosecutor who's taken over for Pat Hayden, who has all that information and is looking... Excuse me, I'm getting attacked by a kitty cat. We've got a new prosecutor that is getting all the information. But our protester's got a big attorney from Seattle or Everett that's wanting to probably come up here and battle it out. So we'll see how that turns out. And finally, our radar car hasn't been out much. We're still getting a lot of complaints about traffic, speeders, and all that. I think people are still sitting at home. They're watching the world go by, and it's going by too fast for them. And we're getting their radar car back out. We just started getting it back out. We've had the windows broken out of it twice. So we've had it kind of sitting at the office after getting it fixed, but we're going to take it out during the day, bring it in at night, and hopefully, we'll get to move it around on a daily basis and just get it out there where it could do some good. And I've directed everybody on patrol as they can to get out and just do some radar. We've got... We don't get to do a lot of our normal stuff, but getting out and stopping cars and slowing them down. It's actually kind of fun, and the weather's nice, and we're back at it. So that's all I have for my report, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Assistant Chief Wagner for the Fire Department.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Our call volume is coming right along with... Over last year, we're about 10% up, even with the lull with COVID. Our biggest battles have been with personal protective equipment, as with everybody else in the fire EMS and healthcare world. But with our cooperative purchasing agreement, we've been working with Anacortes Fire, Burlington, Mount Vernon EMS, as well as our district partners to make sure we're all on the same page, as well as with law enforcement, to have a better purchasing and buying power to compete with some of the bigger entities, like the hospitals and stuff, to get the PPE we need. And at this point, we're looking good to go to Phase 2 as far as PPE is concerned. Transports are down a little bit this month. We're pretty much right where we were last year to date with transports to the hospital, but I think through COVID, a lot of people wanted to stay at home and didn't want to go to the hospitals. But that, again, is starting to pick back up as well. The biggest concern otherwise is training. We're not allowed to do the training like we normally would with our 40-plus volunteers on Monday nights. So we're doing a lot of one-on-one stuff and trying to stay within the parameters of four or five people or less. So we're going to be doing some makeup stuff as we start to move to those newer phases and open that back up. If you were watching Facebook in Skagit breaking, we had a pretty big fire this Saturday morning, about 4:45 in the morning over on Orthway and the 700 block. Crew showed up with 19 people that early in the morning, which was kind of nice. We had three engines, a ladder truck. A very large motorhome started fire right next to a house and impinged upon the garage. Lieutenant Gardner, also our IT person, was in charge and did a very amazing job. They were able to stop it before it extended into the roof line and saved the gentleman's house there, and everybody got out safe. So it was a good morning.
That's all excellent news. Thank you, Frank. So our Building Director, John Coleman.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you. The Building Department's cruising right along. We've probably seen crews out there working. They're following their protocols for PPEs and glad to have everybody working again. They seem to be pretty happy. Not any complaints or concerns from the building community. We haven't seen as many building permit applications lately, but we anticipate that once we enter Phase 3 and people can come to the office more, then hopefully, things will pick up again for that part. But we're still doing lots of our administrative work, and planning still has plenty going on with the several long flat applications that we've had. You may have seen an article about one of them in the Skagit Valley Herald. I think it was on the 24th was the article. It's just a small blur, but it created a bump in emails from the community asking, you know, what's going on with development up there. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And our City Supervisor, Doug Merriman. Do you have anything you want to share?
I sure do. I have a couple of things. There's been a lot going on, as you can imagine, the last couple of months, but I'm shifting now to more the funding of emergency-type expenditures stage. The stage planning is the first one. What we're doing is putting together a policy and a flow chart for staff to use. As we start going through the governor's different phases, this gives us some guidance on what does that mean as far as any workplace restrictions or cautions that we need to do. The mayor and I kind of went through the rough draft of that this morning, and we'll be trying to get that finalized up here in the next couple of days and get that out to everybody. We won't be using it quite yet, but hopefully, as we get to these new phases with the governor, it'll be pretty important for us. The second area I'm really focusing on is emergency funding. There are three primary ones. There's more, but the three main ones are CARES funding, FEMA funding, and HEROES funding. And these are all different reimbursement programs we can use to get reimbursed for our costs that are pertaining to the pandemic. The CARES funding is one we've talked about before. There's about $350,000 earmarked for Cedar Woolley for different types of cost reimbursements. The Department of Commerce just sent out their list of things that that can be used for, along with a five-rules checklist, and you have to meet every one of those five rules in order for that cost to qualify. So we're starting to gather all that data and everything to see what we could submit. Even though CARES funding goes through the end of the year, I believe it is, or at least into November, the state has said we have to turn everything in before the end of October, because it takes a month or two to get through the system. So we'll have a cutoff date that's a little earlier than we liked, but hopefully, maybe things will be calming down a little earlier than we're seeing. So that's the first one. FEMA has a public assistance reimbursement program. These are grants we can get for things like disinfecting our city hall building, emergency medical care, sheltering, and importantly, any overtime that we're incurring with medical or our first responders. So that's one we're also working with. And the last one is called the HEROES funding. And this is a federal funding that offers a premium pay to first responders who are out working on the front line. So those are the three main areas. Right now, I'm working with a couple other cities. We're putting together a consortium of cities that will work on this, and each city is picking one of these grants, and they'll specialize in that. So we'll have three or four cities that work together. Then we have a resident expert on that committee, on that particular funding source. And then what we're hoping to do is, with that pooled information, we'll be able to hit all of these different funding areas to see if we can get some extra money for reimbursements. So that'll take quite a bit of work, but I think there's a lot of money on the table that's available, and it's certainly one that we want to take advantage of. So that's what I have for my report.
Madam Mayor, I have a question for Doug. I have a question.
Yes?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Merriman, I have been really following the HEROES. And our meeting two weeks ago, we talked about that you're on top of things at the state, which is good to hear. And I've been spending like Monday through Friday working with our federal delegation about HEROES specifically, because it's also going to help fund cities with their workers, specifically in fire, and police, and sewer, water, roads, and public works. And we know it went through its first stage of the process through the House, and it's going to be negotiated at the Senate and then come back to the House, and then so on and so forth. What more can we do to help educate our folks in the federal policy area that Cedar really should be in line for this funding? As I hear from Congressman Larson regularly, that it could be a rather significant help to municipalities, especially those in the size of Cedar Woolley.
Yeah. I think as we get into the application process there, what will be really important is that those that are looking at the grant application see a real consolidated effort of our elected officials, whether that be letters written to accompany the grant application, even reaching out to those that we have, our Senate and other representatives there, to let them know that we're pushing for this, and even to get their support letters in the grant applications as well. So it's good, not only just that we're pushing ourselves, but we push those that represent us to give us some kind of support that we can include. That premium pay for our essential personnel, I believe in the bill, it's $13 an hour, and that would be a really nice bump for pay for those that are really out on the front line. So it'd be really important to get that support in that form from you.
All right, thank you so much. I'm an additional resource if needed. Thank you.
Yeah, Doug has been working hard on this, and I also have been hearing... I have to say Congressman Larson has been very, very accessible and reaching out to all the mayors and making sure that all the cities have what they need to get the monies that are out there. He also makes sure that his office notifies all the mayors to make sure that we are aware of each of them. So I want to send a huge thanks to Congressman Larson, because he really is wanting to see all of us taken care of and succeed. So that's just great. So... And then, last but not least, our City Attorney, Nikki Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't actually have anything to add today, because most of the work I do is behind the scenes and is risk management. So most of it's off the record.
Did we lose you, Mayor?
I bet she's coming my way. Let me get my door real quick. The hair is on her way.
All right. And so now we'll move on to council reports. Before we do, though, I'm going to choose to go first. So just want to say that Governor spoke today. He talked about Phase 2. I'm sure many of you read in the paper that the letters were sent by the mayors and by the commissioners, and the governor said no. However, he did make it clear in his speech today that he is wanting to take a look at all the data and everything that has been sent in. He's going to give consideration to those counties, which we are one of them, who have applied for approval to open or even a variance. And he said that that announcement will probably be made earlier next week. So we're feeling hopeful. I believe we are in compliance. We are doing well, and so that is good news for us. I also want to talk about Memorial Day ceremony. A huge thanks to Ron Brown and the American Legion Council. They were wonderful. We had a... It was a lovely ceremony. It was small. It was fairly quiet, but it was honorable, and that happened on Monday. And also, we are looking to apply for a couple of $500,000 grants for Olmsted. Nathan Salsina has been working with our architect, who is putting together the designs for Olmsted, and she and he have written a script, and they put together slides, and we will be going before the committee, actually, first in June, where they talk about areas where we may need to improve or what they're looking for. And then we go before them again in September, and at that point, they will make a decision as to who they will be giving the grants to. So we still have some good things that are going on. I don't know how many of you noticed that the flowers are up downtown. And of course, the flags were out over the weekend. It was beautiful. I want to thank the Streets Department for that. And so then I will move on to Jared Couch. Do you have anything that you'd like to report?
Madam Mayor, nothing to report at this time. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Chuck Owen.
Yeah, I don't have any. I have one thing, a good thing. I finally found a black-market barber, so Friday I can get my haircut. And another thing is, it's going to be a long, sad summer. All of our celebrations canceled, and there's a lot of disappointed people, including myself. Fourth of July is very special to me, because the parade and the carving and everything, it's going to be surely missed by everybody, but that's the way it is. So that's all I have.
All right. Something you might be interested in. I received an email from Carol Torsette of the Lions Club, and they are talking about the possibility of putting together a virtual Fourth of July parade, which I think is awesome. And also, Don Collins of the Steelhead Club, he and a few others have put together... Oh, gosh, I can't remember the name of the squadron, but they're a World War II squadron, or the planes are World War II. And they are the ones who actually, around noon on the Fourth of July, would fly over the parade. Anyway, Don has arranged for them to come again on July 4th, so we will have those happening as well. So not altogether lost, but you're absolutely right. This is... It's a sad year for Cedar Woolley, but we are going to come out of this, and we'll have another beautiful parade next year. And, you know, I think we're going to be wiser and stronger once this is all said and done. All right, thank you, Mr. Owen. Councilwoman Carnegie. Hi, Jermaine.
Hi, there. Yeah, I wanted to ditto what Chuck just said. I've been thinking about that a lot myself, all of our events, all of them. I just love that this time of year. I just had kind of a kudos for one of our employees here. Out of my living room windows, I get to see Brent Frisbee like... I don't know if it's once a week or maybe twice a week, mowing the retention pond over there, all around in there. And between him and another employee, they're just on it. And they do it... It seems like they do it on their own free time. I'm not sure what they're... You know, basically, how they work that, but it's always looking good over there. And it seems like... I know he lives right on that street, on Central Place, but it seems like they just do it on their own time, and just a kudos. It's always looking good around there. That's all I had to say.
Yeah, very nice. Thank you. Councilwoman Kinzer.
Yeah, just one thing. I had a resident contact me that lives over nearby the rail crossing on the end of Ferry Street near Highway 20, and they wanted to know if we could look into making that a quiet zone for the railway in the middle of the night, because as many of us know, the train goes through there and blasts its horn at 1:00 or 3:00 or whenever. And so they just wanted to know if we could look into that. I'm not sure if it's possible, because there's not a crossing arm there, but if we could just look into to see if that would be at all possible, I'm sure a lot of residents would probably appreciate that.
Yeah, that's interesting that you bring that up, because we've actually had that conversation. We have someone who is kind of our liaison between BNSF and us, and we have talked about that. And I'll make a note of that, and we will bring it up again. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Councilwoman Owen, thank you. Councilman McGoffin.
Hey, I just wanted to follow up on the email I sent earlier about the video competition. It's live as of today, so thank you to Bill for getting that event up. Please check it out. If you like dancing and videoing and uploading it, go for it. It should be fun. I'm hoping to get some participation, just to give the community something fun to do.
All right, thank you. And thank you for putting that together, Brendan. That is, I think, something that's going to be...
Mayor Julia.
A good thing for the community to focus in on. So kudos. Thank you, Councilman McGoffin. All right, Councilman Allen.
Well, can you hear me now, Mayor Julia?
I certainly can.
I was having trouble getting the... You've seen my ugly face. Anyway, I want to thank you, Mayor, for going out and laying the wreath. I'm a veteran. My dad is a veteran. I haven't missed more than... This is probably the first time in 31 years that I've missed it. So anyway, thank you for representing our city, and it's just a great tradition that you've fulfilled. So anyway, I want to thank you for that. So anyway, I want to thank you for that and that's all I have to add. And I'm going to give Bill a bad time. I'm having trouble with this darn computer. So anyway, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Allen. And you know what? It was, I felt very honored to do that. I have many family members who also served in the military and we should never forget. We should never forget what they did for us. So thank you. And Councilman DeYoung.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Also went out with family members to Union Cemetery on Memorial Day. It was just the decorations were great. And again, so thankful that you're out there for a low-key ceremony and look forward to its historic pageantry as soon as this pandemic is over. So thank you again for doing that. I've been walking around quite a bit and finding folks are being industrious in their yards with backyard play areas and tree houses. There have been some pretty spectacular creative tree houses out there. And I've been noticing an increase in what we would call victory gardens or vegetable gardens coming up. So don't be surprised if we see some extra zucchini at the end of the season. I wanted to thank, of course, Nathan Salsina for helping out at Riverfront Park and getting some volunteers activated from the DNR through Mickey there, also looking at the native plantings from Skagit Conservation District. And we keep pounding on the grants from the federal government, the state government and the NGOs, nonprofits that are available out there. Just looking at the unemployment numbers that were released yesterday, about one in five folks are unemployed here in Skagit County with Boeing layoffs in the school district and also in the hospitality business, we see some impacts there. So be on the lookout to help out some neighbors in need. Also very excited to see the Safe Start Program getting fired up from Phase One to Phase Two. And we know the Skagit Board of Health will be meeting again on Friday to prompt the state again on moving that forward. And then, you know, as I mentioned earlier, just working with our federal delegation to just keep Cedar Woolley in mind when looking especially with the HEROES Act. And then finally, Madam Mayor, just remembrance, to remember in order to keep our community transmission rates low and continue our progress toward these phases, everyone needs to continue practicing good physical distancing and hygiene and when in public to wear a mask, stay six feet apart, and remember to wash your hands frequently. And we're all in this together and it's critical that each of us do our part. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman DeYoung. And, you know, kind of along those lines, sending out kudos to the food bank. They have been working overtime, basically more than that probably, to feed our community. And they do an amazing job. So thank you. All right. So moving on then to public comments, I just want to remind everybody that, especially the public who may be listening in, that our public comment period is closed due to the form of meeting that we are holding, which is the go-to. However, you may provide a written questionnaire or comments via email or by letter. And we will certainly read them into the minutes. And just so you are aware, we're currently exploring other options and hopefully come June, we will be trying another method by which we are doing our meetings. So stay tuned for that. Moving on to unfinished business, we're looking at ordinance 1956-20, which is the imposition of affordable housing sales tax. This is our second read and I'm going to turn this over to Doug Merriman.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. As the mayor just introduced, this is regarding Substitute House Bill 1406, the Affordable Housing Sales Tax. We've had the opportunity to talk about this a couple of times now. So tonight, this is a call for action on this to adopt ordinance 1956-20. And what this ordinance will do, it will impose the new sales tax for affordable housing. Again, it's not a new tax. The state is going to give up a portion of their tax that they already collect to fund cities and their efforts on this. On the agenda packet, I put the fiscal impact in there. We'll get about $14,000 a year is the estimate at this time. And then we can go ahead and do what programs we want to, or we could contract or do an interlocal with another governmental entity and pool our sources with them in that effort. So really to get it going, we're doing the last step of getting the sales tax allocated for Cedar Woolley. And that'll be by a motion to adopt ordinance 1956-20.
All right. Thank you, Doug. And again, this is just, we're just trying to allocate those funds so that they do come to Cedar Woolley. So are there any, are there any questions or comments at this time?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilman DeYoung.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember DeYoung, and I move ordinance 1956-20.
I had a question first.
Yes.
We can do that in discussion, right?
Yeah. Yes, Councilman Kinser.
Yeah, I just wanted to know if the city, I know there's different things that these funds can be allocated to you. And I'm wondering if the city of Cedar Woolley would be able to set up a rental assistance fund for Cedar Woolley residents with this money specifically for our residents.
Yes. In fact, we can even do, help out with rent as part of that. Doug, do you want to expound on that?
Yeah, there is a population threshold, which we are under it. I don't remember if it was like 20,000 or something like that. But for cities under that population threshold, you can use these funds for a rental assistance program for tenants.
I like that idea. That's a great idea.
It's not a lot of money, but if we could help out, you know, 14 people with the rent, it would seem like we should try to keep it local however we can.
Right. And you know, and tonight, we don't have to decide that. That is something that we can actually discuss later, if, you know, if you wish. I mean, we can, if you'd like, we could have that discussion or we can wait till later. What we're really looking for is, and I have a motion by Mr. DeYoung, what we're really looking for is just to allocate those funds to us, to Cedar Woolley, to the city of Cedar Woolley.
Right. Right. I would like to discuss that at a later time.
Okay, Madam, Councilman Allen here. Are you there?
Yes. Are you there?
Okay, I appreciate Councilman Young's motion. Okay, we can get into it later. Rental assistance and 1,400 a month or 1,200 a month is a upper before the pandemic hit. If we give eight people $100 a month, or we can go in with the county and maybe every five years be able to build a home for a family that will live here and produce. Anyway, we'll get into this later. I'm for the motion. I just don't think we can divvy out $80 for 12 people and make it work out. So anyway, I'll get off my.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to second the motion. Call for the question.
Okay, is that Councilman Jared Couch?
Councilman Couch, I'd like to second the motion.
Right. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. So I have a motion by Councilman DeYoung. It was seconded by Councilman Couch. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. All right. So good deal. I'm glad that we did this. And that really brings us to the end of the meeting. It's a short meeting. We don't have any new business. So without further ado, if there are no more comments, thank you, everybody. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Bye.